Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May.
Yep.
No, June. God, it's flying. June 2024 monthly meeting. I feel like we were just here for monthly meetings. Here we are again. Um, tonight's the night that we hear reports from our standing boards on our departments and our municipal partners. It caught up on what's been happening over the last month. Trustees make report on their work and then we have a bit of business at the end of the agenda. Um, so we need to start with a roll call, please.
Well, Steve Sorbo. Trustee Phillips Woods.
Here.
Trustee Bozey.
Yeah.
Trustee Primark.
Yeah.
Mayor Polley.
Yeah.
Um, and I would like to request a vote to add an agenda item. We have had communication from the C-streak today, um, sort of part of the course that they communicate a little on the later side, but I would like to be able to discuss one portion of what they put forward. Um, I would make a motion to add that as number ninety, that discussion of C-streak summer dates. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay. Next is recognition of Simon, who I do not see, so I will read this in the record and we will make sure that he receives it. So proclamation honoring Simon Piazza on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Simon is the only village resident this year to receive the rank of Eagle Scout. Um, others are in Phillips Town and Nelsonville, but Simon is our, Simon is our village representative on that list. Whereas the mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling the values of the scout oath and law. And whereas scouts achieve their ranks by fulfilling requirements in areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. And whereas Simon Piazza, village of Cold Spring resident and member of Phillips Town, Troop 437, has proven to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Simon built his leadership capacity as Troop 437's senior patrol leader for the 2023-2024 season. And whereas Simon achieved extraordinary feats while serving as senior patrol leader, living on a sailboat with fellow scouts for a week, while at the sea base in West Virgin Islands and circumnavigating St. John's Island. Um, and learning to adapt and endure hardship while at the World Scouting Jamboree in Korea when circumstances required the US contingent to pull out and regroup Camp Humphreys Military Base. I don't think any of us have any sort of experience, things like that. Um, whereas Simon attained the highest rank of Eagle Scout. While he, while he attained the highest rank, Simon completed merit badges that improved himself and his community. He completed a sustainable community benefit as his final project. And whereas to complete his final project, Simon led a team of diverse community members to design, build, and install chess tables at the village of Cold Springs Waterfront Park. And whereas the chess tables expand opportunities for passive recreation and socialization in the diligent public spaces, benefiting residents and visitors alike. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the village of Cold Spring, on behalf of all village residents, joins with Troop 437 in recognizing Simon Piazza's initiative, accomplishments, and thanks him for the benefit Eagle Scout project extends. And we have Simon sealed. We will deliver that to Simon on another day. Thank you for that. It's quite, it's quite an accomplishment that will carry him, carry him forward well in life.
You know, I'm an Eagle Scout.
You are?
He can sit here someday.
He could sit here someday. Well done you. What was your project?
He belongs. I remember, I remember though, there was a national conversation about flag burning and that was the question of my interview with these kind of older Ohio men asking me, like, what do you think of flag burning? I was like, I'm actually bored.
Oh, my God. So moving on. Trustee Primark speaks on his own behalf. Um, a couple of announcements. Um, Village Hall is closed for Juneteenth. That's next Wednesday. Um, and yard pickup is this week, yard boost pickup. So bag it. Um, or yeah, bag it or put it in bins that can be done. And we'll move into reports from village, village departments. Do we have Michelle with us? The accountant?
Yes, the accountant is with us.
Hello.
Hello. So you're catching up on taxes and payroll?
Yeah. Um, the fiscal year ended on May thirty first. Um, it's too soon. Um, doing a lot of year end cleanup to close out the books. Um, fiscal year new budget started June first. Um, we will have the AUD for the state. Um, typical year end reporting. It's due the end of July, working on that. Um, and then the independent auditors, um, I reached out to EFPR group. Uh, they're willing to extend our contract one more year to get us through this. Um, and then next year will be time to bid out the service again, um, but they're on board to get us through this year.
Right.
Um, other than that, um, it's just a reminder, taxes are due June thirtieth with no penalty. Um, June thirtieth is a weekend, so postmark is acceptable as well, um, when it's received, you know, in July, as long as it's a June postmark. And that's all I got. It's a lot of behind the scenes paperwork this month.
Thank you. And you've also been assisting us with, um, prepping for parking conversations which we'll have later in the agenda. So I thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Um, roadways and facilities. Do we have Bugsy?
Bugsy, you're with us.
Okay, so I'll go through. So all of these reports are available online if you want to read them in detail. Um, but I'll pick up some highlights from the, from the reports. Um, so the roadways and facilities crew, important to note, cleaned and stocked the village, the visitor center bathrooms fourteen times and Mayor's Park four times. Um, they've been cleaning trash from the subway, the riverfront, dockside, and village hall each week. Um, catch basins and culverts were cleaned four times. And they did make some, I think, maybe we talked about this last month. I feel like I'm saying it again. We, they did make replacements of some of the steps on the Irish stairs on, um, at the end of Locust Ridge, at Kids Cross, um, to get back and forth from school to Parrot Street, et cetera. Um, they've been filling potholes and, um, they have, um, with the help of, uh, community service, painted the bonnet of twenty-six fire hydrants to bring them into compliance with National Fire, what does the PA stand for, park? NFPA, National Fire Protection Association. We're gonna call that, we're gonna call that good. Okay. I know that the wastewater, water and wastewater superintendent cannot be with us tonight. Um, we have before us, um, a request to approve a quote from Hatch versus a service agreement, continuing a service agreement. This is for treatment equipment both at the water treatment plant and at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, Michelle, anything, any other detail that you, that we need to know about this contract?
Uh, nope. It's an ongoing contract. It ends up, uh, saving the village money because now, um, the equipment, if it goes down, there's loaners, there's a contract to get service, you know, um, as a priority. It's worked out well, so Matt would like to continue it. Um, and it's in the budget for, to continue it.
Very much. So would someone like to make a motion regarding the quote, accept approving the quote?
They'll make a motion to approve the quote from Hatch Service for Service Agreement, July 2024 to June 2025.
Second, all in favor? Hi. Okay. Um, and there's a couple of notes for this report. You've probably seen the guys out, um, managing landscape and vegetation around, um, boundary growth of the copper dam, um, and rocky road throughout the months. Um, and we are in the period of seasonal disinfection. Um, the chemicals change at different kinds of year depending on what, what possible pathogens are in the water. Um, good to note that tap water is not a good idea for your, um, if you have fish in tanks at home. Um, this is the worst time of the year to use our water for that. The fish can't handle the chemicals. Um, it's good for us, not good for them. Um, okay, that's it on water and wastewater. Um, code enforcement, we do not have a report this month. Lots of changes. I want to introduce Abby McKinney, um, who is the new Secretary to the Boards. We have created a new position with Abby. Um, she will be working with applicants who come in to seek building permits and then stewarding them through the process of making applications, making a complete application, coming before the Boards, meetings with the Boards, documenting, um, Board minutes, et cetera. So hoping that, um, in fact, we feel very confident, um, that she will make that process a smoother, a more accessible one for the public. Welcome and thanks for joining us tonight.
Welcome, Abby.
Police enforcement, we do have the OIC with us. Hello, Officer in Charge.
Good evening. Over the month of May, the police department answered one hundred total calls for service. Uh, most of those were traffic stops and, uh, animal complaints. So I'd like to, uh, just let everybody know that we do live in the middle of the woods. There is a lot of wildlife out there, bears especially. They've been coming into the village quite a bit. Um, they like garbage, but they don't like noise. So if you see a bear, keep your animals inside if you can. Um, and if you see them make a lot of noise, it will scare them away. Matt, we have nothing to report.
Um, I thought it was striking your, there are thirty-five, um, traffic stops out of that one hundred, and I wonder if you could give us a bit of insight on traffic enforcement. But inside parking, I'm talking about moving violations.
Moving violations. Uh, they are mostly speed violations. They are, uh, disobeying a traffic control device, um, which is U-turn violations. Um, but it's mostly speeding tickets, especially in our school zones.
And it sounds like you have been, the numbers have been ticking up there. Enforcement has been, thank you very much, Abie, particularly around the school zone.
Do we have any numbers on parking tickets?
Um.
Issue parking tickets? I do. I do. So let's see here. You want a total number?
Yeah.
Um, so for the month of May, we had a total of two hundred eighty-nine parking ticket issues.
Okay.
Any idea how many are on Main Street?
Um.
Two hundred.
I mean, I could, I could, I, I, I couldn't tell you, but I could tell you, excuse me. Let's see, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Uh, fifteen were not on Main Street.
And also, Doug, in the, um, the, in the last few months, we went along with a new system that allowed a lot more detail, uh, for reporting of the tickets. Yes. Your intention to bring that in part of the month reports, like we were just seeing lately?
Um, as far as what, what would you be looking for?
Uh, there's a lot of detail about individual, uh, uh, incidents. Uh, we can look at some of the previous reports for that, but it, it said, uh, the time and who the officer was and the location for each incident.
I.
Some of that, it's, uh, I think, um, some of us appreciated the transparency and, um, we didn't necessarily do much analysis, but it's available for the public to look at if.
I will have to look into that as our parking enforcement. Um, I am unsure at the time if I could give you the information on who wrote those tickets.
I don't, so it's the, I think it's the CAD readout, right? It's from.
Yeah.
Yeah, the CAD readout in the past has had time, time and, I mean, we redacted. For a couple of months, you were giving us like the.
If you would like that. Uh, so you're not talking necessarily about the parking, not about parking, about actual tickets. Um.
And responses.
I could do that for, uh, responses. As far as the ticket information, the ticket information that I get only gives me the name of the violator and the violation, does not give me who actually wrote the ticket.
Well, and of course, tickets then go through a court process. So you would see them reflected in actual outcomes.
Right.
Court reports.
And maybe at this point, it's not, it's, it's not for the ticket, it's for the calls, like. For the calls, for the calls to service, yes, I could do that.
Yeah, what it is, it was when you were able to sort out, uh, identifiable notations, address and, and name that additional information, which is really helpful to have. Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay. Fire Company, um, somehow we, Fire Company is in session tonight instead of Tuesday night, so they are not able to join us tonight. Um, a couple of quick things to point out. They have four new members, which is a, which is a big, a big deal, um, in one month. And there is a secretary who has stepped up to take, um, to take Stephanie DeSantis' place. So that's really hard and really wonderful, wonderful at the same time. Um, I don't know who it is. It's been pretty quiet. Um, so there's not much to report. Um, but they did provide, and it's on our village website, some summer safety tips about grilling and outdoor fires and camping, et cetera. And also they have requested to, uh, close off Church Street um, from the rear edge of the firehouse to Main Street on Friday, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, from four to nine, to coincide with the end of their fire academy, which happens every year. So picnic and bubbles of fun. I believe that you have, you have reviewed that. OIC and cleared that.
What was that for?
By the church, closing Church Street. It's okay.
Doing two things at once here. Yes, I have approved that. I have, I have the notification for that. Yes. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the closing of Church Street, uh, from, from the edge of the firehouse to Main Street on Friday, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, from four to nine PM. Second, I normally go to that event, um, and, and say a few small things. Um, it is my thirty-fifth high school reunion that weekend, so I will not be here. Be great if someone else would go in my stead. Okay, okay, thank you.
Should we vote?
On which?
We will vote on the.
Oh, did we not join in? I put a vote. I'm sorry. Uh, uh, all in favor? Hi. Sorry, Aaron. Thank you. On, on the street court. That's what I meant.
I don't think, yeah.
What are you saying? What are you saying? Okay. Um, if you haven't been to a village board meeting before, humor is really essential to get through the evening. So all good. Um.
Right, there are people out there. Usually aren't.
Okay, justice court. So, um, twenty, over the last month, twenty-eight defendants, twenty-nine charges, um, income of thirteen thousand five eighty-three. And Aaron, just to point out, the amount for parking tickets isn't a reflection of a single month. That's whatever has come through the system over the last X period of time and settled.
Yep.
Um, okay, reports from our standing boards and committees. Do we have anybody from HDRB? Okay, see them, but just to say, it's, it's worth reading the HDRB report. There's a lot going on. They're very busy. Um, they are very efficient and I would like to take note of how effectively, um, they and residents are working through the workshop process, where you come in and present ideas and get direction first before proceeding to application. It's working really well, um, for HDRB. Um, and then as a sort of a, an efficiency, another efficiency element, on May sixteenth, they adopted a standalone worksheet for applicants wishing to change or replace their windows, outlining options, considerations, and our expectations. That is a more detailed resource alongside the design standards and also will reduce the larger, some of the larger documentation that needs to happen for windows. Windows are the most common modifications. Okay, planning board, I know Jesse is not able to join us this evening, but, um, I wanted to, to read a section of this report because I think it says a lot about this evolving planning board and the really good work of it. During, during our meeting on May twenty-third, we held a public hearing for and ultimately approved the application of one thirty-three to one thirty-five Main Street's change of use request. Remember the zoning board, um, reported on the variances last month. Working closely with the commercial space, I'm sorry, this request involves a site plan that would remodel a building in poor repair that currently houses one apartment and one commercial space into two apartments and two commercial spaces. Working closely with the board through the planning process, the applicant and his architect evolved the site plan to add much-needed ADA accessibility, moved onsite helping, more comprehensive screening, and safer access for future residents of the upstairs apartments. Um, I believe as chair that this product will be a significant value add to our already vibrant Main Street and is a great example of the productive and positive impact of our new, but deeply invested planning board. So thank you, Jesse and your team. Do see the chair of zoning board here. Hi, Eric.
Hello.
What you got for us?
Well, I have, uh, don't have much to add beyond what's in the report. It was a, a routine month last month. We had two meetings, three public hearings, and we approved, um, all three applications. Um, routine matters. So I've, I've nothing to say beyond that.
Activity for a moment.
Eric lost connectivity for a brief moment as you were making your statement. I do apologize.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I, I just said it was a routine month. Last month, we had two meetings, three public hearings, and the board approved all three applications. Um, they were routine matters.
Excellent. Well, I think the language that you used in your report is worth a public hearing as well. The board approved all three applications because of their minimal detriments, their consistency with community character, their substantial benefits to the property owners, and the owner's lack of superior, superior alternatives. Thank you for weighing and balancing.
That's what we look for every time.
It is, but it's, it's, it's worth noting that there is a process and it works.
It's nice to see all the boards, our landy's boards active.
Yeah.
They were quiet for a little while, so.
We still need a, we still need a zoning board member. So if that's something that interests folks, why, please send off an email to the village board. Ah, actually, now we can send it to A McKinney at coldspringny dot com. Okay.
I have a question, just real quick.
Yeah, sure.
And, and I know we don't have anybody from the store, uh, the HCRB, but, um, there's so much going on. The C-streak board too, right?
The what?
It's, it's a lot of, this, uh, no, maybe I'm forgetting.
No, it's planning.
Planning as well.
Well, the HCRB has two new people in the last year as well.
Okay, this is great to, to see the amount of work.
That's good stuff. Um, okay. C-TAB did not turn, the tree advisory board did not turn a report, but I will tell you that I think I've forwarded some emails. We're working with, um, Saint Mary's, the, um, the, the, the lawn at Saint Mary's has, like many things in the village, strange property lines, the trees that are along Main Street belong wholly to us. The ones that are along Chestnut belong in part to us and in part to church. Um, they are in worse shape. Um, one of them needs to come down shortly. Um, and so we are working with Father Steve, um, in the short term to get that down. But then the tree advisory board is also going to be developing policy, which we've never had before, on how to address shared trees of the village. There is state, there is a state organizing structure for that, but we haven't, we haven't addressed it in language at the local level. Um, Recreation Commission, we have no report, but we do have, um, a resident requested the use of Mayor's Park pavilion for a birthday party and the, the RUC Commission would not meet in time for that person to get their party's approval for the kids. Um, the event coordinator has, uh, made sure that insurance was secure, the fees have been paid and cleared with police, highway, fire, and ambulance for, um, we do have the capacity to make approval around the Recreation Commission so this resident can have the park. Any questions?
Hundred people at a kid's birthday party is fantastic.
I mean, I might want to go.
I didn't have that many.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the application for use of Mayor's Park for a kid's birthday party on June twenty-third at two PM.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Happy birthday, whichever, whichever of the boys is having. Okay, municipal partners. We have the deputy supervisor from the town of Phillips Town with us. Hello.
Hello, everybody. First time I've been here in the last few months because we've had sessions on our last Wednesday, I think the last few months. But anyway, keep the report short. Uh, we had the, uh, Pennsylvania Reserve, uh, Fort Worth Jane Trail, uh, visitation committee gave the report. I see you have your report up there as well. Um, so I'm not going to say too much about it. I just would like to say that there's a lot of disagreement, but what was, it was provided and what they really came up with. So I'll leave it at that. Uh, we had two honorary proclamations, which you just honored Simon. We did as well, Simon Piazza and Daniel Campanella, both, uh, obtaining the Eagle Scout, which was a very good accomplishment. I also attended their ceremony on Saturday afternoon as well. It was very well attended. It was probably seventy-five to eighty people there as well, and many dignitaries throughout for the county and state as well. It's nice to see this scouting is, is thriving here in our community. It seems like every year we always have at least one Eagle Scout in Phillips Town somewhere. So that's great to see. A couple of things here. Uh, Karen Earl provided an update on food scraps. We have now two hundred twenty-seven people. We collect almost a thousand pounds per week now, which is twenty-four tons a year. It's nice to see that the village started theirs yesterday, so we should do best luck for that. If there's anything to help you with, just let us know. I know on yesterday, it was, I think, your first pickup day and so forth like that. So if everything works out with you, most likely, we have, we have food scraps picked up on Saturday and Tuesdays. If everything works out with you, we're probably going to eliminate our Tuesday of the, of our recycling plant. Also, uh, the town is letting Peter Daver's, the Daver's farm, we own a piece of property down on four oh three and ninety. We're letting them use an acre of property down there. They're going to be setting, uh, they're planting sweet potatoes. I think they're going to end up with like fifteen thousand tons of sweet potatoes when they're all set and done, which I stopped by there last Monday. They started the process of planting them and they should be ready around the early, late October timeframe. So when that time comes, he's looking for some volunteers to help him pull it back around. So anyone's interested, just let, let us know. Uh, we're installed, we sold an ATM machine in our, at the town, offered people's convenience. Also, we're investigating and installing solar on our new highway garage. We got a grant, we got a grant of two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to install solar. And I just started, I've been looking at it for a long time, but things changed over the last year or so. Anyway, we're investigating that and I got some pretty good information regarding that. So looks like we're going to move forward with that. Put out RFP about it next week.
Awesome. Thanks. There's a, a, a bit more detail on Peter Davering. Um, when you go to Baskerville, when you're driving out of the village to Baskerville and there's the large, um, agricultural field on the left, that's, uh, part of Peter Daver's farm, this additional parcel, brings into greater production more land. He, um, grows fresh vegetables for area food pantries. Um, I think there are four food pantries that benefit from Daver's farms and sweet potatoes are super high in nutrition, um, and something that he wanted to grow on the property he had but didn't have room to do. So thanks, Bill, for that.
So it's a big partnership. It's going to help members of our community and other adjacent communities as well. I know we've learned food pantry, he provides some of the kipsey and also the feast.
Yeah, right. And here too.
So obviously. So question and clarification. There's a visitation data committee report. This is for the Phillips Town Board, not the village board, right?
Right. That was, that was just in the Phillips Town. Correct. They, they had about, they had about forty-five minutes time to give the report.
I'm going to report on that in my report. Thanks, if I attended. Excuse me. Um, we do have no report from the legislator, but a couple of quick things on the county level. Um, our, um, movement of our GIS data that has been compiled over time and on a consultancy basis for water, wastewater, um, storm drains, et cetera, has been uploaded, um, through an agreement with, um, the GIS department at the county. So now it's housed. It's housed in a public location that we have access to, our engineers have access to, the county has access to it as well. So it's good, it's a good share. That is, that has been completed. Um, and our ARPA, thank you to the clerk, our ARPA checklist, so that we can go to bid on our upper project has been completed. And now we return that. Um, and we need to have that in contract by the end of December. So we're, we're in good shape. But thanks for what you did.
Thank you.
Okay, for the mayor and board of trustees. Everybody's listening to me a lot. So someone else like to give a start with a report? I'll start. Um, did you get a grant? Uh, oh, the agenda item on grant? Sure, sure. Um, okay, well, food scraps, thanks for the fallout. So we started our food scraps, um, drop-off site on Kimball Ave, part of the town program. So um, if you want to participate in the program, you go to town hall and, um, and you sign up and then you can use either drop-off site at Lingate or Kimball Ave. We hope that, um, this makes it more convenient for villagers to participate in the program. Um, and, and a big thank you both to Bugsy, who got some, who got a bunch of our supplies, and then to local volunteers. We assembled the bin, um, uh, on Saturday together. So that was great. Um, we've been, been more work on our clean energy communities grants. And we'll have more to report out on that soon. Um, and then, um, also on grants, and I'm going to the agenda item, the grant updates. So the, a lot of the state grants are due the end of July through the single process, um, the CFA, the facility to fund the application, something like that. So we've been looking through and finding which ones we want to apply for. The priority from my perspective is, um, applying to address our high hazard dam. Um, so it's the upper dam that is in bad shape. Um, uh, and there's a state WQIP grant, um, that has a, that can cover construction. Um, the grant maximum is two point five million. The estimate we have is five point eight eight million. Um,
Um, so we are gonna put in the best application that we can, hopefully we get the full two point five million. Um, I'm looking at other grants to see what we can have, but we're also talking with Michelle, our accountant, on what are the different strategies that we can use um, that may include um, the, like, you know, rate changes um, for water, um, but also I think she's identified bonds, um, and uh, and even we can take something in general. With my understanding, and we're able to make these applications this time because of the time we spent over the last year on engineering portion. Now we, now we have a basis to work from. I also wanted to um, point out on that note, Bob, Bob, your board had some discussion last week about stormwater grants. We've spent a lot of time with the CFA stormwater grants that are offer, on offer this year. New York State doesn't consistently offer the same grants, they, they announce grants, you dig through and figure out which one best fits your issue, or what issue you have that fits what they're offering, um, and make the connection, and it's always a very short timeline. Unfortunately, the stormwater grant, the, the, which had been offered previously, and we were hoping would be able to apply to that intermunicipal area where we need to look up in Nelsonville Woods. That funding did not um, come through this year's CFA, and the stormwater funding that is available has a lot of stipulations for points that we don't meet, either Phillips Town or Nelsonville or Cold Spring. Believe me, we're looking everywhere we can, um, but you can pass that on, I know Judy had a question about what we're missing, and the answer is we're, we're not missing, it's not, we're, we are not qualifying, but we're still looking, we're still committed to looking. We were told that there may be a um, a grant that comes out in the fall, um, that would be for the flood study. And um, for participating in a, like a community practice um, with other communities around Hudson Valley, we're learning about kinds of grants and and connecting with um, state staff, and so that's how they, how we heard about it. So um, I've asked for more info, we don't have it yet, but that's now our latest lead. For covering the flood study. So, not great news compared to what, where we thought that we would be on that a couple of months ago, but they changed the um, eligibility criteria, like what they would cover on some of these grants that we had mine. So, PP posted on the stormwater, we'll keep looking at it um, over the next couple of months. It's super frustrating at the local level, you have, you know, federal and state officials announcing all of this infrastructure money. And it bringing it, drawing it down to the local level um, is really, really, really difficult. Um, because of barriers to get set up along the way, like a lot of people don't realize that the, that I just, that the, the big infrastructure funding bill has prioritized areas around the country, um, and those areas get, get the call first. Um, you know, have, have the eligibility first, so we're, we're, we're not getting up, just it's not as easy as the themes on the, on the outside or at first blush. Okay, uh, anybody else? Yours getting your ballpark in.
Yeah. Um, you put forward a draft for social media policy, I need to look at it and circulate it, sorry, I forgot to do that. Um, we also have your uh, rec draft that needs to be circulated. You've been working a lot on data and parking, um, I just wanted to report on my, on two things from last week. So I attended the steering committee meeting for the Hudson Highlands Fear Trail last week. The committee is being dissolved, and for the participation will come in the form of content areas, such as invasive trail ecology, et cetera. Um, it does seem like an effective approach to comment issues from topic areas. Um, however, a replaced with the primary function of the steering committee, which was municipal leader and stakeholder update, was not outlined. So I hope, I hope that it will be soon. Further, it wasn't made clear um, who will be appointed to the working groups, by whom, and how representation will be distributed across impacted municipalities. That has been um, an issue with the data committee, so I hope that we'll see um, equal representation across municipalities, and I'm sure that more, more clarity will be coming from HHT, this is a, a new model they're rolling out. Um, the release of the draft environmental impact statement for the Fear Trail project has been pushed into late summer or early fall. You may see another push as the traffic studies have not yet been reviewed and presented to the public. It's a giant undertaking, um, and it's not unusual for drafts to get pushed out. Um, I also want to add to our public record and make available to trustees, um, we each have it on your desk, so we have some copies on the table. A very well-developed report of the Phillips Town Visitation, Visitation Data Committee, which was presented to the town board last week on June sixth. I attended that meeting, as did James Lebait, one of the village's two representatives on the data committee, I don't know if anybody else was there. Um, the report walks through the very real methodological and mathematical problems and the visitation data analyzed to date by HHT. Um, and that's been focused on the village of Cold Spring and Phillips. The problems have been affirmed by the independent consultants, working with the data committee and funded by the Fear Trail. The report is super accessible, um, it's, it's not, not piles of numbers on a page, it's very accessible. It's a great help to understand in the concerns that have been raised by the data committee, um, and by some elected officials. You can also watch the video of the presentation on the town's superb new website, well done. We're gonna follow shortly. And also, congratulations, held in graduates, graduation is this weekend. But now we'll move into, if no one has anything else, we'll move into the meat of our agenda. So last week we had, we, we had a public meeting and took comments um, related to our parking plan and particularly to Main Street. And we have taken all of those comments um, and consolidated comments and responses to them um, in internal documents that have helped us to organize our thoughts, and we've, we're sort of coming at this in a multi, multi-step approach. There are some things that we think we can do immediately, quickly, uh, nearly immediately and very quickly, to alleviate some of the, some of the issues that have been raised, not only by merchants but by local users of Main Street. Um, and so the goal for tonight is to get through discussion of three topic areas. Um, and to set a public hearing for those. First is modifying hourly rates for the meters. Second is um, extending the limit, the number of hours that can be uh, bought on the meter. And the third is making smaller increments on the meter so that people can buy less than an hour. So that's, that's what we can do sort of in an immediate response, and we're gonna have, we have not discussed this together yet, so this, it might be a sloppy conversation as we throw ideas around, and you're just gonna have to be patient with us, this is how, this is how decision-making works. And then hopefully at the end of the night, we'll, we'll be able to schedule a public hearing so we can close that out. There were a number of other ideas that came forward, both from the discussion made by residents and merchants, but also member, ideas put by the board that need some more research um, and discussion, and then we can't decide on them tonight. But they are on our radar, and we'll make sure that this um, these, these sheets are available on the website, but you know, concepts related to um, designated employee parking, metering hours, local, local hours access, we know we have a lot of work to do on signage, that's a bigger conversation than for tonight. Um, so those are some of the ideas, and then others were do we have, do we have capacity to expand free parking in the residential district? All of that is stuff we need to, we need to find out if that's workable from the state's perspective, from, from enabling legislation. But know that we hear it, and we're tackling what we think we can in an order that makes sense um, for relief in the short term. So, with that. So I guess the first, the first issue to take up in discussion is a proposal to modify the hourly rates. So the determinations we need to make are what amount, how are the fees incorporated? I've asked Michelle to stay for um, some of the fee discussion if we need to. Can we equalize fee incorporation for the kiosk in the app? Do we want to retain the incentive of a less expensive municipal lot, sort of to try to drive cars off? Part of the goal is reducing congestion on Main Street, right? Um, and are there any sign changes? So, and this part is, is simply a change in the master fee schedule, which we can do tonight. So, I throw that out, it's a question of modifying rates.
Great, um, I think part of that discussion should also be the fees that are included in, or, or not included. Right now we pack on a forty-five cent fee on the app.
We don't, Park Mobile does.
Park Mobile does, right, thank you for correcting me. Um, whereas the kiosk don't do that. Um, so I think part of this discussion, it would be nice to have, you know, the question of whether or not we include the fees in all of the different outlets, or um, if we want to charge it, continue charging it. Um, and just so everyone knows, both the kiosk and the app charges us a fee. There's the credit card processing fee, which is about, well, Michelle might have a more definite number, but it's um, on Park Mobile, there's a forty-five cent user fee for the, like, every transaction. So even if you buy another hour, you pay another forty-five cents, or somebody pays forty-five cents. Then there's a transaction fee from the credit card processor, which is fifteen cents plus three percent. Um, the kiosks, Michelle, do you know the exact number that the kiosk charge?
No, um, the kiosks don't have a flat fee like Park Mobile does. Um, so it's a much higher percentage, and the percentage varies based on Visa, Visa two, MasterCard, Black Card. There's a thousand different kinds of credit card programs, um, so roughly um, before we switch to this kiosk on the old credit card processing company, um, it was as high as seventeen to eighteen percent. Um, this credit card company estimated on average would be like ten to thirteen. Um, Park Mobile with that fifteen cents is, comes out to twelve percent, so I've been using twelve to thirteen percent. Um, but we really won't know until we get going with the kiosk what that transaction fee charged back to the village is. Um, and from
Sorry, keep going, I'm shy.
Um, for clarity, that forty-five cents that Park Mobile charges, it doesn't even pass through the village. It comes straight, Park Mobile charges it on top and takes it off the top, so it doesn't even pass through the bank account, it's not like we have to pay it back. Um, so it's a clear distinction where it is not the village's choice.
Direct user charge.
Correct.
When you, um, when you mentioned the fifteen cents transaction for Park Mobile, that's twelve percent, that's based on four dollars an hour, the minimum one hour, right?
Uh, the fifteen cents, it's per credit card transaction, whether it's an hour or four, it doesn't matter, and then three percent on top of that.
But for example, if we hypothetically said two dollars an hour with the fifteen minute increments, that would be a fifty cents charge, that we'd be getting charged fifteen cents on the fifty cents. And somebody would be paying forty-five cents on top of that as well, starts not making a lot of sense, right, for too low transaction values.
Um, I, I do think it's important to note um, that, and I think I emailed it out, the Park Mobile contract um, is a three-year contract with a one-year automatic renewal. Um, the three-year portion is up in October. Um, it might be worth a conversation to see what's negotiable on Park Mobile's end and what's not. A lot of municipalities in New York State don't waive that forty-five cents, um, but I have seen it higher in some municipalities and lower. Um, I don't know what Park Mobile's rationalization is or their reasoning for forty-five cents. Um, it is a common one, um, it's the most one I've seen when I've done some research. Um, I did leave a message with Park Mobile, our account rep, um, she's like a, kind of like a one lady show on Park Mobile support. Um, I, at the end of last week, I haven't heard back from her, I wanted to pick her brain on some of this stuff, she might even be on vacation, um, I'm not sure. But some of this stuff is a bigger conversation that we might be, get better understanding from, and it's not for lack of trying. Um, I tried, and Park Mobile also has changed last comment, that transaction fee on the village once during the contract. Um, so it's really, we don't have control. It went from thirty-five cents to forty-five cents within that three-year period.
Just for clarity, the reason that we're in a, the third year of a contract with Park Mobile is, Park Mobile, the village started with Park Mobile at the municipal lot. When the municipal lot began to be um, metered with, with an app. So we, we inherited Park Mobile and we can either continue with them or I mean, that's, that's sort of the, the, the big, they're the biggest provider, and the one that is the most used.
Right, and they work with our enforcement devices. Yeah, and so a lot of the choices we made in terms of the kiosks and the apps and the you know, it all works together through the T-two system, which is the enforcement, so that we can actually track um, how long someone has parked on Main Street based on how, their meter uh, rates, which communicate to the officer's tool.
But maybe in October, there'd be an opportunity to, to renegotiate, but for now, what we have is the rates we have. Right, because we don't, we can't change that tonight, so those are, those are fixed costs. Um, looking for a consideration, something for the consideration yet. Sorry, I have a cold that my darling son brought home to me, I am not, have COVID, I'm not, it's just cough that I can't take. So, um.
We um, maybe address some of the questions that you would ask in the presentation. I think your introduction, because I think that was a good framing of everything. One is, there's difference in rates between Main Street and the municipal lot. That's sort of an incentive to use that. We, we, that, that might not be working as the incentive we were hoping.
I think it's, I think it's myself, I think it's too soon to tell. Um, we haven't hit high season yet, um, and, and I think that there is, there it is a reasonable goal to try to reduce congestion on Main Street and people looping. And if we can drive people toward the municipal lot, I mean, it, it can be, it doesn't have to be a huge amount of difference. I mean, imagine if we were to pick two fifty and it's two dollars at the municipal lot, I don't know. Just throwing out numbers, but something that incentivizes people not hovering on Main Street.
I think to make that effective, we would have to have really clear communication, and I think that that could be a challenge, like frankly. Unless we happen, unless we say like less, you know, signs, it's less expensive, go right. It's, it's hard for new visitors, it's one thing for returning, people who learn this, but a lot of people, this is their one time, and, and so, I like the idea of it, but I think, um, I think we'd have to have a really good implementation.
We also have the incentive for free parking, just about as close, right, so.
Signage for that. Any difference?
Ultimately, I think the simpler we can make it, the simpler we can make everything, the better. Um, and maybe after this program is well established, we have more, more capacity in terms of um, established communications, et cetera, to, to play with numbers, but I'm not opposed to having it be the same. I agree with the concept that we were trying to get, but I'm not opposed to having it be the same price at this time.
I mean, I think you bring up a good point about the communication, it is hard to I mean, we have these huge signs that say free parking, and yet people still don't know that there's free parking, so I don't know what, like, how big does a sign have to be, right?
Some element of that is, I mean, as we're talking about the town and the website, is Greg is working on a visiting Cold Spring landing page, and as we move into the new platform for the compute, for the website, we're gonna have more capacity to do, to provide maps and information and links and all of that, that we have an effort for.
Yes.
But it's not here yet, so that, that makes an argument for simplicity.
I mean, is your, I guess my question to you is, are you suggesting that perhaps they should be the same price?
Yeah, I'm aligned, I'm aligned with Mayor Foley that, you know, simplicity is good, and if there's a, there's one price and that's what the lots are, I think you know, we, we're still, there's a lot we don't, we don't know if people are parking at the municipal lot or walking to Main Street, or if they're parking at the municipal lot, hiking, right?
Right.
Uh, and going a little stone's foot. So, it's um, uh.
A lot of variables.
Yeah, and I think we'll be learning a lot more in time, but this is just, well, I, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like, it sounds like that consensus around single price. All right, one item down.
Good. Okay, I'm thinking of a number.
Um, uh, I really, when thinking about, well, in two things, thinking about fees, but also thinking about how you break, how you break into a meaningful thirty-minute increment, right, that's, that's the request, that's among the requests. thirty-minute increment, right? That's, that's the request, that's among the requests, is a thirty-minute increment. And, and still, still clear something after fees. I would propose two fifty and one twenty-five for the half hour.
We, we.
Go ahead, sure.
I think that's a very good proposal, but I, I think, um, can we look at that increment question first?
The half hour first?
Whether it's a half an hour or fifteen minutes or what, because I think it won't be hard for us to find consensus there as well. And it'll also move it forward and get the rate, uh, question a little bit, uh, better. So, um, an hour seems like it's too coarse resolution, right? So.
As a minimum.
As a minimum time. But I worry a lot about this discussion we just had about fees, there's a fixed transaction fee. And, um, you know, if it's fifteen minutes, I might do fifteen minutes and I might use my app, do another fifteen minutes, do another app with another fifteen minutes. And I've just incurred three forty-five minute charges for myself and three forty-five cents. And then, and then three fifteen cent transactions plus additional fees for the village.
And we don't want to be.
And the app makes it really easy to click and extend the time, right? So it's like, I, I worry about that there's a possibility that we might be losing money if the increment's too small.
That's what I worry about.
Fifteen minutes. And I really started out really liking the idea of fifteen minute thing. We have free fifteen minute spots if you spin the, the roulette wheel and get that great, if otherwise, you know, whatever, you pay something for fifteen minutes. But the fees just make it.
I think there's anything of, of less than thirty minutes is we're losing. From the village perspective and from an income perspective, we're losing. And there are, we have added fifteen minute spaces. There are free spaces at the end of each residential street that, that abuts Main Street. There's the MTA lot, there's Metro North. So if you, if you don't want to pay for thirty minutes, there are other options. Um, but I, I agree with you that that is, that is the smallest increment we could go to and still clear.
I've seen in other places, they give three fifteen minutes for the first fifteen, and that is something that can be tracked through our meter systems. That's something I, I would also like to consider.
How does that play out from a, from an enforcement perspective?
So it's not a bad idea, um, because we would be able to track it with the handhelds. So basically, if somebody pulls up, they decide they're going to park in the fifteen minute spot and they don't register it with the kiosk or the app, it doesn't go through. So it's like an unpaid parking thing. So you're saying they would, if they were only parking fifteen minutes, it'd still have to use the kiosk?
They would still have to use the kiosk, because we would not know if it's a parking violation, an unpaid parking violation, or it was that fifteen minute grace period.
So then they end up paying and then we end up paying. Back to your point about fees.
There's a fee for the.
For hopping on to say, I'm using the free fifteen.
Because they were doing that before when people were buying free parking.
Correct. But are we talking? Your proposal was for any space.
Any space, that was just the fifteen minute spots, the fifteen minute spots from my perspective, we're working.
I think, I think we shouldn't have, I think you kind of lose the efficiency and the ease of using a fifteen minute spot if you have to use the app.
Right, those spots, I was suggesting, I was suggesting for.
No, I wasn't talking about the fifteen minute spots. Fifteen minute spots are designated fifteen minute spots. So if you're in a fifteen minute spot, you have fifteen minutes. You don't have to check in on the app for that. I, I, I was thinking for the other spots, if it was a fifteen minute usage.
Yeah.
They would have to register in the app.
Yeah, yeah, and then I wonder about the.
So, and, yeah, and my, my thinking on this is just, again, a way to sort of earn the local shoppers back because those seem to be the group that is the most vocally complaining about our parking plan and claiming that it's kind of repelling them.
But we're dropping rates and we're proposing a smaller increment. So we are addressing, we are addressing their concerns.
You're saying, I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you were saying.
Which one?
Eliza.
Eliza.
About.
I was saying that, um, the fifteen minute, free fifteen minute spots would be more for locals. And this is like a way to sort of get them back and, um, you know, have them come back for Main Street, because we've kind of pushed them away through our launch.
Could this be a potential for not today, but later? And a question for Park Mobile of, for other places that do fifteen minutes. Like, is it possible to do it without charging? Because I like the idea, but not if we, not if we encourage the charges.
Right, I can reach out to Park Mobile and find out.
Michelle gets a phone call back, she could.
I, I agree, yeah, I agree with Laura that the, um, I'd like doing something for the locals, something that real quick drop off or, you know, pick up a puzzle or something like that. But a, at the same time, I really worry about the flexibility we might be introducing. These fifteen minute spots are free, you sit there, these fifteen minute spots, you have to register in the app where you get a seventy-five dollar ticket.
It's too complicated.
Seems really complicated. So, but maybe there's an improvement we could.
You, you're just talking about fifteen minutes for residents or for any.
Something that's important that we have not talked about, we keep mentioning residents and visitors. You, you can't, you can't subjectively, um, enforce. I'm not sure if that's the right legal term, but we can't say, well, I know you, you're a local, you're not getting a ticket, but I don't know you, you're getting a ticket. That's not constitutional. So there are boundaries here that what we can, what we can meet. Hello, Mr. McCollum, it's you, come in. We need to get your email. So I, I, I think that you all have, are, are agreeing on thirty. Amazing, thirty minutes is the shortest amount, increment, kind of paying.
Feel there's consensus among more, more, more of us, yeah.
Well, I'm making them ask the same thing. Are you feeling that as well?
I support that, yeah.
Can I have one, like, technical app kind of question? That also set the, like, I was in favor of the fifteen minutes, because if you know that you're going to be somewhere for an hour and fifteen minutes, it's nice to be able to pay for the hour and fifteen minutes and not pay for two hours. But I understand the point about the minimum. But if we set it at thirty minute minimum, does that also mean that the increments that you can do on it?
All right, everyone, we, uh, still running into some technical issues here.
We didn't have any conversation, wow.
We've paused the conversation.
Get him back, pause the conversation.
Pause right now for.
It's the full screen, but having it full screen and then there's nothing.
With the view with all the different faces.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great, yeah.
So you want me to just do grid instead of?
Okay, so we paused conversation while we got our connection reestablished, so you didn't miss anything. But now I don't remember what we were talking about. So that also set the increment that, that you can buy, that you buy your time. So you would do it, so then you would do like.
Fifteen minutes after that.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
In, in Park Mobile, that should be okay. Park Mobile offers a lot of flexibility. Uh, the problem becomes the kiosks. Um, so that, although it wasn't a line item in the discussion amongst the board, it, it might be something to consider how important it is for the village to have the Park Mobile flexibility match the kiosk. If you want more flexibility in Park Mobile, we can do that, but it won't perfectly match the options in the kiosk. If you want everything to be consistent, um, there is no increments for the kiosk. Like in, you know, fifteen minutes, thirty minutes like that.
So there are, actually. Um, it's just really limited with the way the kiosks get set up. If you want to let people rebuy time, um, but we want to respect the hour limit on Main Street, for instance, then you can allow one rebuy um, with the options of, you know, menu items. So it could be like thirty minute, one hour, two hour. But all of those options, or two, any two of those options can't equal more than your four hours. Because if you had what, thirty minutes, one hour, two hour, three hour, four hour, then someone could buy four hours and come back and buy three hours. It's really, really a clunky technology that we're, we're working with, so we'll have to kind of budget to make it work with whatever time limit we decide on Main Street. Um, but like, if they come for thirty, if they buy thirty minutes and they come back and they want more time, they won't be able to buy thirty minutes. They'll be able to buy any of the other amounts.
So it seems, again, I come back to the idea of simplicity. And we've got fifteen minute spots. Thirty minute increments are easy, it's an easy to divide, right? I know we haven't made a decision about price, I'm just saying, two fifty, half hours, one twenty-five. I think the other thing that is, that is glitchy between the kiosk and the app, I mean, the, the kiosks, we got a backup for people who had connectivity problems, who are worried about connectivity problems in the village. So the, the kiosks are there for a backup. That, that, that differential, because of the, the way they work differently and how you add time, I feel like it would simplify everything if we, if it were a, you can buy X number of hours and that's it. No adding hours.
Well, and I think just better signage on the kiosks will help, like if we make a little sticker sign that says, this is how it works. You can buy, you can select your time, but once you've done it once, you know, you can't come back for more on this kiosk. If you want more flexibility to change your time, then use the app. Like, we, we can make signage that explains that, or if we decide to let people buy more time on the kiosk, then we can explain like how that works. But I think.
That's a really long.
I wouldn't put it on the screen, I would literally sticker it to the base of the kiosk so people have something to read and like try and figure it out. It's, it's complicated, we need like videos to explain this stuff.
So I have, I have a proposal here, because this, this idea of minimums is a bit a unique thing that we're talking about today, because I believe there's no code change that mentions minimum times, right? There's no, it's not the fee schedule for the minimum times, it's simply how we set up the system, which means we can revisit this as much as we want. So, we might never want to revisit it again.
The only thing that requires code change at this stage of what we're talking about is um, the number of hours, total number of hours. Now, the rate is part of the fee schedule.
But I think, I would like to put a proposal out there that for now, we make an agreement for thirty minute minimum. And see how it goes and then, and then, um, you know, look for, uh, other adjustments like first fifteen minute free or, or fifteen minute increments as we learn more about what the capability of the systems are.
I mean, that's reasonable to me.
I'm okay with that. I mean, I think the thirty minute flexibility is a real benefit, especially if someone's just coming down to Main Street. They can find the fifteen minute spot and wants to grab something quickly.
It's what people have to learn.
Which is nice, like, you know, if you don't need to be there for a whole hour, then why are you paying for a whole hour?
That was that, one of the requests on, in the June sixth letter, follow-up letter from the, from the merchants, allow half hour parking meters to encourage Main Street visitation by locals, so.
And just to be clear, that can be done for either the app or the kiosk.
Yeah, not a problem.
Is that right, Michelle?
What am I confirming the fifteen minute?
Thirty minute.
Can be done.
We can do any increment that.
I, I can't say definitively for the kiosk, but I can for Park Mobile.
Yeah, I've emailed with both and they both confirmed it is possible.
Michelle, if we, if we reduce the increment to thirty minutes, then as a percentage basis, our transaction fee would go up proportionally if, when people take that, right? Are there any concerns that you have about the, the change in fees as proportion to the revenue?
The fees, eh, as a percentage of the revenue, no, it's the overall revenue from going from four. Anything lower is where there are concerns, but not the proportion.
Okay, thank you.
So we've identified under the third item, thirty minutes, under proposal C. And we've landed on a single price between the two lots. The two items that are left are the stickier ones. One is how many, how many hours for the limit and the amount per hour. So, so the feedback we're getting is four is too short. Some feedback is six is too long. Three, I'm sorry, three is too short. Well, right, three is too short, six is too long. What thoughts do people have? Um, I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
My, my thinking is that, um, the parking committee had recommended, recommended three. And the only merchants that I recall being included were food services. So there was a representative from Catherine's at the early stages. Doug's Pub was involved at one point, the cheese shop was involved, and I'm a merchant, just don't whine, so I've been involved too. So all food services have been considered, and three hours works for food services. But like, to the benefit, because those businesses need people to turn over fast. But the voices of the merchants who were expressed last week. Who have, if you have someone who comes in and needs to try on three different sizes of four different dresses, like, you need more time. And three hours isn't enough, that person liked to have lunch and then went shopping, like, those folks are feeling the loss of customers because of the three hour limit, and I think that that's a really valid point that was made. And that was an, an opinion, a voice, a perspective that wasn't considered or, or wasn't included in the formation of the planning. So, um, but I also think four hours worked before. Um, and I think that if you go, if you swing too far in the other direction into five hours, six hours, then you start hurting the food services. So it's like, I, I don't know, that's, that's my feeling. I think four hours is a good number.
I mean, I, I think that four sounds reasonable. I think six is, doesn't make any sense, but sort of defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do. The end, because you do want people to turn over. Five, I, I don't know, I think four, I think four seems like a reasonable though, and then if people need more time, then they.
They can move to another parking lot.
And stay longer. I mean, there's no. Right, there's no, you don't get kicked out, so. And this is another point of, as our communication gets better, we can say if you want to spend longer, it also doesn't mean it's a lot.
Right.
Right, we don't have a time limit.
Four to three, perfect.
Yes.
It's still free. I think four hours is a good balance.
The, the one thing I'd say is that, you know, it's, it's not a theoretical four hours, it's, it's, our, our meters start at ten, and so three hours means ten AM to one PM, right? Or eleven to two. Um, if we extend that to four hours, that would be ten AM, two PM, or eleven to three, et cetera. If we extend it to four hours, sorry to be repetitive about this, but, you know, it's ten AM to two PM. I think I'm doing that right, or eleven to, to three, thanks. Yeah, so, so really, by the difference between four hours and five hours means if the concerns. If the concerns with the food service, you know, how many, how many people, how much lunch are we serving from two to three, for example? You know, in that specific hour, it's not just like all over because it's, our meters don't go to eight or nine PM at night, right? It's, it's just for two to three PM is all we're talking about for that, or three to four PM. And, and I know this village really well, I pay attention to a lot of stuff, I kept never bothered looking at like how busy. Our food service establishments are between two and three PM, so I don't know. But it's like, is, would that really impact them negatively if we. Went to five hours versus four hours, because we think it would benefit other businesses by going to five hours or four hours. It benefits residents who wanna park once, visit multiple places, hang out, visit the waterfront, come back. And, you know, without worrying too much about their meter expiring.
Total enforcement duration is how long, on Friday and Saturday? So eight hours, so you're talking about having a maximum that's.
If, if we talk about five hours, yeah, it would be most of the time that's there.
But, but then means hikers can come and park all day, and this is an area that's meant for shopping, you know.
Eighty, it's eighty spot on Main Street, and if everyone uses the five hours, that's basically eighty people who are shopping on Main Street. With parking. You know, and like I think, I, I, I still think that like having, encouraging a little more turnover on Main Street is. You know, I think without like the specifics of exactly what I have in my brain, but. I think like having some kind of turnover.
I agree, however, that's not what's happening now. And, and I wish I printed out the data and were able to show it, but we know from the data. Looking at the hours that individual cars are parking, there is a bell curve and there is.
There is right now.
Free spaces at the beginning of the day and free spaces at the end of the day. So they're not turning over and getting replaced with other cars, they're turning over and staying out of the.
Oh, we're, it's, it's June, most public schools in New York State have not let out yet. We're not in peak season of September, October, I think that data is interesting, but I don't find it conclusive. Because we're, we're looking at a snapshot of time and a snapshot of time that is not our busiest time. And it is at those busiest times where you, I think, I think that's these are the conversations we had before. Where we're wanting to try to drive some turnover, I do very much appreciate that Eliza, on, once, once Eliza pointed out to me that. Um, the business owners who've been part of formulating the original plan were all food service, I thought, oh, oh, yeah. That makes sense, it's represented, we're talking about a different kind of, of user in more browsing shops.
Classes and things like that, I mean, but I don't think there are many classes that go more than four hours, anybody have any?
Say hair salons, if you're getting your hair done, sometimes it may take you three hours and then you can't get something to eat.
To the reality.
But just to throw out what I know on Main Street already does happen, being on Main Street every single day. There, I mean, that's something to consider, you can't eat and get your hair done, there's not enough time with four hours.
So here's the other reality, we have limited linear feet, parking spaces on Main Street. We cannot accommodate, you and I are a pair tonight, cannot accommodate everybody who wants to park on Main Street. Not everybody is gonna be able to park at the register, that's just a fact. So I think we are, we are trying to be responsive, we're talking about extending the hours, talking about shorter increments. Of time, we're talking about, um, dropping the amount a bit. I think we're meeting, we're meeting people, trying really hard to meet people all the way, but we are never gonna make a parking space for everyone. In every scenario on Main Street, that's just not gonna happen. So I don't feel strongly four to five, but, but given, given that we're not into peak season yet, I think that I fall on the four hour side.
Peak season, you're waiting sometimes two hours for a table. Should also set up, but when you just can't get a table or pizza, you can't.
That's not a parking meter issue.
Different problem.
Okay, so we're not having a public exchange right now, the board is talking.
I, 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 let me first say, I appreciate your, your, uh, uh, desire to reach a consensus here. And, um. Yeah, the, uh, I, I, I feel, I don't, I don't, I also don't feel super strong about this. I agree the data just suggests things, it's not determinable. You know, the, the way I see it, you have this, this, um. You know, this curve like this, right, which if we extend the time, extends just one side of that curve, right?
For data today, in August, that curve could be way wider in that one.
If, if there are, if there are vacancies and spots at the time that people want. It's been a challenge already, but it's, um, and I know from firsthand experience because I've paid the meter. Ten times already.
You're a best customer.
That's the outlier in this case, so the, um, it just, it's my contribution back to the village. The, um, but this, this, what's curious is that this isn't happening, right? And by extending, not everybody's gonna go to the full four hours or five hours, but, um, but some will. And so that will fill in some of this, um, by, by having a, a smaller rate. Then some people will park less time, which means there will be vacancies here, here it's really full, right in the middle. Right, there's no vacancy, so nobody's gonna park here and then stay for five hours, cause there's no place to park right here. They're leaving now, which is, which they, they're leaving like at three or four, and then there's nothing coming back, I'm just. I'm saying it, extending to four hours will help with more revenue, it'll help with cars staying longer. It'll help with people being less nervous about like going back to the park, that's all very good things. I just think we'll still have emptiness at between four.
And I think we should hold that judgment, we're speculating right now, we should hold that judgment until we are in peak season and see how that goes. So it sounds like we're landing at four, that we have consensus around four, can I say four? Or a majority at four, okay. Okay, um, among the last one, the guy that rubbed Justin time for, best part is, um, how much? What? Oh, what? I, I, in my head, it was taking fifty, is that what you mean, yeah, I mean, the reality is. This is, it's revenue that we're not gonna have, and, and it will have budget impacts, and those budget impacts will be real. And, you know, it could be, it could be new employees, it could be services, it could be, I mean, it's gonna be painful. We are, we are close to the bone, um, so, yeah, I, I'm afraid to go too low. On the revenue side.
Can we ask, I mean, we are at, just to say, we are at the bone, like we have a, we have revenue and expenses that match each other in our budget. And so, but, um, by law, um, and Michelle, you made some projections for us at different prices. Um, a different cost per hour, and it looks like at two fifty, it would be about seventy, like compared to our budget. From what I understand, it's something like seventy-five thousand dollars that we have to make up. Um, but you, have you looked at all at, um. You know, what that would mean in, in practical terms for us?
Um, so I've tried, um, you know, the, the biggest expense in any municipal budget. Is going to be, um, staffing and associated benefits, um, the next largest expense is contractual obligations. Contracts that the village needs and has also signed, um, and then beyond that. Is professional services, which is also a contract, but not usually locked into an amount, and then after that is one-time projects. But the majority of the one-time projects are already being funded by fund balance, um. Right now, the expense that we're not locked into is that additional highway labor, um, halfway through the year, um. You know, um, and these are, these are still projections based on our assumptions of thirty-five percent. And seventy percent occupancy, you know, it's unknown yet if those rates are true. Um, if they will go higher or lower, um, we're just, I prepared numbers based on our first assumptions. To compare as much apples to apples as possible, um, but yes, it's an eighty-six thousand loss in revenue. But a ten thousand savings in expense, so it's a net of seventy-six thousand. To be clear too, it doesn't cover that highway laborer in full either, um, so that wouldn't, you know, that's the easiest one. Because that position sits vacant, um, but it still wouldn't cover it all. We'd have to really go line by line, um, but nothing stands out, like even like E-code, which would be something, it's a, it's a huge wish list. Something really helpful, but we've already budgeted that for fund balance, so something like that, that I would pick off the expenses, it doesn't even help here.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the lessons that I've learned at the new trustee here, um, I think the, uh, it was said at one point. That if we made this four dollars, it would be easier to lower than to raise at a certain point. And what I've learned is that the opposite is true, that because we baked in projections at four dollars into the budget. Lowering it is a lot harder.
Actually, it was just the app that, what Tubbs was arguing for. That the reality is if their revenues go down, something, something on the expense side has to go away, and right now, we don't know what that is. And who knows, we, you know, maybe we have a windfall and someone decides to. I don't know, someone decides to buy a piece of village property.
Like Michelle might say, there's a difference between recurring revenue and one-time revenue. And we really can't use one-time revenue for recurring expenses. Cause then we just set ourselves up in next year for a problem.
Right, which is why when, you know, we're in a position to have to draw down on the general funds, we have a healthy general fund right now. Primarily because of some, from some frugality, but also things not getting fixed. And now we're at a point where we can't put that off anymore, there's stuff we have to fix, not an option, it's a public, it's a public safety issue, it's a life safety issue. So, so it doesn't, how we, how we choose and what, what, what we don't pay for is, is gonna be tough.
But we don't have to decide that today. And, and I think also.
But the reality needs to be there.
We're, we're faced with a program that, that we have implemented that. Seems to be, at least the metering part, very, very unpopular, well, everybody's yelled at me the last couple of weeks. And, um, and we're, we're not doing anybody any favors by keeping that.
Popularity is not, this, the discussion of metering Main Street has been going on for thirty years.
More importantly is like the outcome overall for Main Street and for our community. We do not wanna destroy our Main Street, we do not, we have built. A really healthy Main Street that depends on both locals, local support and tourist support. No Main Street in America can survive without those two elements. And this parking plan is currently threatening the local support part. And if we don't lower the rates, then we are going to harm our Main Street, which will be a different problem that we won't wanna deal with.
All on the same page, that we need to lower the rate, and I don't say, and Mike, and I'll say, at least for me, my question to Michelle isn't questioning that. It's saying, it's our responsibility to be really serious about our budget and making sure that it's, that, that we can pay for our commitments. And pay for our staff and all the things that we need to do, and just that like, we need to hear from her about really understanding the implications of the decision that we made. That we make, um, and then over the course of the year, I think we have to keep a really, like we always keep a close eye on it, and Michelle does. But I think we should keep a extra close eye on it, recognizing that, the decision that we're making. That, you know, and, um, so I don't, I don't think any of us are questioning the fact that.
No, but if anyone at this table is concerned about popularity, you're in the wrong chair. There's no popular, it's no being popular on a board member, someone's always not gonna like you, someone's always gonna be unhappy, that's not the job. The job is to be a fiduciary of the village and make tough choices at some times, and that's how it is. So, coming back to the number, um, in the range of comparables that Eliza. Looked at regionally, um, two to two fifty seemed in the range. And that brings our half hour increment to either a dollar twenty-five or a dollar. Does anyone else have a count, two fifty is my proposal, does anyone else have a counter proposal?
That depends on if we're including the forty-five cent fee or not, because, um, in the research I did around the state. Two dollars was generally the highest, except for a few freak out layers in New York City. Um, and I think that if we're gonna charge forty-five cents on top of that, then I would say we should go.
We aren't charging.
The service, if the person who is buying their meter has to pay another forty-five cents on top of it. Then I would say we should go to.
Then our revenue is even less as a village, it's even less, because we're eating, we're eating the cost of that.
So you're giving a rate of a dollar fifty-five to absorb the forty-five cents on behalf.
I understand this, but we paid for kiosks that were eight thousand dollars, eight thousand dollars apiece. We did not charge an extra fee for the kiosk.
We took it out of.
It's a service fee, right, it's, it's the same thing, they kinda do the same thing, Park Mobile gives us free signs. And this is the, the cost of doing business, so a- again, these are little things that you can do. To reduce the frustration and anger, the emotional human response. To the parking plan that we're dealing with right now, that we've presented and that is going not as well as we wish. Um, and I just think that that's, you know, I get it, it is an extra expense, but I think that we should eat it just. And, and then set it at.
But can we talk about that fee for a second, so we eat the fee and then they go to a restaurant, they go to a store and they use their credit card and gets, what happens? It gets charged the fee, right, so like why?
Sorry, we're not having public engagement right now, the board.
My point is about fees, the feeling of fees or the actual payment of fees, whoever's. Whoever ultimately has to pay that money. That for us, as a village would be, I hear you on the emotion of it, but I, and the taste, get it. I don't like paying fees, but how do we, how do we absorb that as well, when we're already dropping the price?
I mean, it's the cost of doing business, a year ago, we projected a, a budget of a revenue stream of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. We didn't make a dime of it, cause we didn't even have the service in place, and two years ago, we didn't have this money at all.
What did we have to do when we, when we were closing out the budget year this year, where did we have to draw money from?
From the general.
From the general fund, which is not intended for one-time expenses, for recurring expenses. And it is frowned upon heavily by the controller, I'm not putting the village in that position again.
No, none of us are planning on.
And when you say we absorb, let's talk about who the we are absorbing, we're all talking about this like it's abstract money. Right now, we get no sales tax for Putnam County, so the people who offset. Whatever fees are happening for us to get this parking money is coming out of resident pockets. Resident taxpayers and building owners who are taxpayers, it's not some magic entity absorbing forty-five cents, it's us. And it's wrong that we're in this position, that Putnam County puts us in this position, they should be ashamed of themselves, they're sitting on a fifty-nine million dollar tax surplus, it's disgusting. But here we are, I don't believe that the village should be absorbing. It's, if you, you're, our streets are a commodity, you wanna park on Main Street, here's the cost, and we're coming down from where we were.
Right, can I add something too, um, I, I really, and it, it's simplicity. I really like the idea of not having any surprises or hidden fees in anything, however. I'm really worried about what behavior might be if we absorb the forty-five cents, okay? Because, so it's, there's no disincentive to just buy a half an hour at a time.
That's right.
We pay that forty-five cent every half hour then, as opposed to. Yeah, and so, I think that is a real transaction and we pay it now. Maybe we can negotiate that with Park Mobile, lower that amount or shift things around, or have a higher percentage and a lower speaking. Um, I have no idea whether those things are possible, but we're really at risk of. Of digging into our revenue way more than just forty-five cents if, if we allow people to do anything. Cause I would, I don't know how long I'm gonna be on Main Street, I'm gonna do the minimum amount of time every single time unless there's.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody comes in and is like thirty minutes, thirty minutes, thirty minutes, and they get their four hours and thirty minutes increments. Then we have been totally screwed.
Yeah, and we don't have the flexibility to absorb the rest, we just don't have it.
Can, can I add something to?
Yeah.
Um, so we talk, we talk about simplicity among this whole process. And yes, right now, the kiosks and Park Mobile are different, but it's, it's a price to pay for park. The kiosk doesn't charge transactions, Park Mobile is. If we, if the village decides to absorb that forty-five cent cost by adjusting the rate.
You're about to be brilliant. Can you say it again?
I can't hear you.
She's about to suggest the dollar.
Because a transaction fee is not levied by the village.
Alright, Michelle, we lost you about halfway through.
I don't, I don't know where it cut off, but for simplicity, if we talk about two dollars, um it'd be a dollar fifty-five in Park Mobile. And then two dollars on the kiosk, um to absorb that forty-five cents. And that means that paying for the actual physical space now has two different rates on two different mechanisms, and that's not. Easy to codify or on the rate schedule, that's difficult. Also, Park Mobile has options where certain members can waive the fee by doing certain things within the app. So now if we have those Park Mobile users and we're waiving the fee by absorbing it into the pay for parking rate at a dollar fifty-five. We're getting a dollar fifty-five and those people aren't paying that forty-five cents, so they got a true discount by using advantages. In other places, um they advertise that Park Mobile has what's called a Park Mobile Wallet. Um, you can front load your Park Mobile account with twenty-five or fifty dollars. It's not clear if it's a one-time fee or no fee, but every time you draw down on that as a gift card, there is no subsequent fee. Um, so worst case, you pay forty-five cents one time to load your wallet with fifty dollars. And then every time you park on Main Street, you're not paying forty-five cents.
Be saving a lot of money, actually. Okay, so. These are really good points, and it, and it highlights another thing that I'm thinking about, which is simplicity is on the one side, but transparency is on the other. And we, we're not great yet, we know, we've acknowledged, and letting people know what the fees are, that municipal lot is less, that there's a forty-five cent fee if you do it via. There's no forty-five cent fee if you do with the kiosks, and, and I think we're all aligned, that we have to figure out better ways to. To be transparent with everybody. Cause that, because a lot of the feedback has been about the shock of surprise. And that, that's nobody wants that, right? There's, that doesn't help anybody to surprise them. So, you know, if, if we let people know, hey, you, you just walk over to the kiosk and you get a couple of steps in and then you're actually paying less. For the people who want that, or if there's this wallet in the app, which I'm gonna check that out.
Paying less though.
You're not, you're paying the same.
You're paying the same amount, you're just not charging additional amount by a third party, which has nothing to do with us.
Respectfully, because I am charged forty-five cent less as, as a parker. That is absolutely a difference between one and the other, it doesn't matter to me.
Right, this, the village is a business, right? As a business owner, you can't control what costs are passed.
Not sure, we, we were discussing whether we control the bus or buses.
But you're not, right, if a third party is going to charge for your product, they're going to charge for your product. You can choose not to offer the product, or you can choose to offer the product, but that third party's gonna charge it regardless.
Right.
Well, but I got confused, were you trying to say that you as a consumer, a parker, is saving money?
No, no, me as, I'm, me as a consumer, I'm going to be charged the forty-five cents no matter what.
Right.
Right, the only difference is.
To go to the kiosk.
Right, but if I go to the kiosk, that, we're, and I apologize. Maybe I'm not making the best point here, but like, if you're willing to go to the kiosk, great. If you're not willing to go to the kiosk, the only option is to pay the forty-five cent fee, right? We are, we're discussing now how we get around the customer paying the forty-five cent fee.
I, I think. I think Michelle made a really good point, which was that it's actually, it would be two different rates if we. Ate the fee, like, because then our parking rate on Park Mobile would be the forty-five cents less. Plus the app fee, if we were going to eat the fees. And I don't even know how we would make that, I mean. But you can have two rates on Main Street.
It's just a conceptual difference, right? It's something that we do on the backend of like.
Through our, our hands, although you can, you can set it up, or you can set Park Mobile up and we would have to send Park Mobile.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably, they just count how many transactions, and then they fill us hundred transactions times forty-five cents.
Right, that's how.
And, and also just, it, it's only a rate for the first. The first increment that you charge, like, it's only a different, like, rate after that. No, I know, but if you're, but if it's a two, if you buy two hours, you pay forty-five cents. We've been talking about it in, about the first hour, but. It equalizes.
If you buy more hours.
So I, I'm gonna propose, we don't touch the forty-five cents right now. That, let's, there seems to be enough challenges to making a change to it, and. We need to learn more about what Park Mobile's capable of, if we negotiate, then we also need to learn more about whether this does constitute different rates for different. For the same thing, or not, I don't think we know the answer to that, right? So I propose we don't, we don't change that today.
Don't change what part today.
We don't consider incorporating, like, absorbing the forty-five cents.
Correct, we're just setting an hourly rate, and then, and then the charge, the charge applies on the app. And that's how it is, that's how it is in every municipality where you use Park Mobile, not unique to Cold Spring.
Not every, but most.
So, but now we need to come back to the power, and I put the two fifty on the table in, with, in consideration of the fee.
In consideration of the fee, but can you explain what they do that?
Two fifty plus.
Plus forty-five cents.
The difference, the, um, Michelle's difference for the budget that she predicts is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Between the two hours and the two fifty, that we'd have to.
Two dollars, two fifty?
Yeah. That we'd be in the hole.
Do others have thoughts?
Yep, um, so for two, for two dollars an hour, she expects that we would be um, under. Um, revenue by hundred, by hundred thousand dollars, and at two fifty, we'd be under revenue by seventy-five thousand dollars.
So Michelle's projections, if I understood them correctly, only looked at the rate change, didn't look at any of the other changes that we're considering, right? Um, so did not look at what it meant to. The time.
Well, I mean, it's based on the same, well, because it, it's based on the seventy percent full for eight months. And thirty-five percent full, so.
Yeah.
But he doesn't look at some of the things we've been talking about later, in the future of changing the number of metered hours or changing the number of spaces. Or some other places where we could get additional revenue.
We're looking at the lowest, the lowest hanging fruit for improvement at this stage.
So, my feeling is, uh, from a budget point of view, twenty-five thousand dollars seems. Or workable, but higher number, obviously. But I also worry about this, this lesson that I mentioned about it's easier to raise things to lower things, and. And I worry that is two fifty the right number, or should we have a little bit of experience that's not peak? But, and some data at four dollars, or is two fifty gonna be a significant enough change to understand? And influence and change behavior the way that we'd like to with this? You know, because if we, if we get the numbers right, the hope is we're actually exceeding the seventy-five percent. Right, that's, that's part of what's here. I don't wanna look at it as a popularity contest, I understand, but we are looking at, you know, there are, there are. Empty spaces where there's no revenue at the beginning and ends of the day, and. From mathematically, how do we solve that? And so lowering the amount could attract people who aren't parking there now. And could get more return visitors and could be filling up those morning and evening hours that are empty.
As possible, I wanna make sure though to, I've said it before, but I wanted to say it again. Parking is one variable in consumer behavior, right? We are in two proxy wars right now, consumer confidence is in the toilet, inflation rates are really high. Cold Spring parking is not, is one element of the full commercial picture. There are lots of things impacting consumer behavior right now. So, what I, what I, what I get concerned about, Erin, is. Setting an expectation that if we set one rate or another, it solves every merchant's problem, it doesn't.
Just to be clear, I wasn't, my, I was just gonna talk about merchant problems, I'm talking about our problems, revenue. And that, you know, how the target occupancy is seventy-five percent.
But I, I am concerned that in the way it is being framed, the, 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 the logic that flows out of that is. The decisions we make on parking are gonna, gotta, you know, turn around every Main Street, they're gonna be making double the money.
I mean.
I mean, it's just not a rational, it's not a rational.
That is not, that is not something I'm saying, but I understand.
For all the reasons you just suggested, then a lower price would make more sense if we're sincerely trying to, again, like. Bring locals back to Main Street, and so I, I personally think two dollars is the right price. Um, and again, and that's based on all of my like parking meter rates around the state. Like, two, one fifty is a more common number across the board in every little town, um, up and down Hudson Valley.
But we're not every little town across Hudson.
And we don't know what their parking inventory is, we don't know how many spots, we don't, I mean, there's a lot of variables that we don't know, and, and those scenarios of why they chose. Those numbers.
I mean, I've looked at a lot of their models, I've looked at their parking maps, I've done extensive research. Um, and a lot of them are not that different than we are, and I think two dollars is already higher than most of those.
And they're also, I would imagine some of them, I mean, you could, you could make arguments about Irvington or Hastings. We are, we are a tourist destination with, with a train stop. That gets utilized on top of all of the car traffic that we get, and ultimately, we hope more and more people are coming. Via public transportation, but I don't think. I may be wrong, I don't think Hastings and Irvington see the influx of seasonal. Um, density that we do in the fall, the, the attraction to the place is different, we're surrounded by beautiful state parks. We're right on the Hudson, we're a seventy-minute quick ride from the city, there are lots of variables that may not exist in other places. And also, I don't know what Irvington and Hastings and all the other, I don't know what their budget situations are.
It was, they were twenty-something, you know, uh, like. List, right, we, we can pick whatever to.
We don't know what their budget scenario is.
Well, I think.
Fact revenue.
So I think that's the most relevant thing, is, that's really what makes us, we don't have a sales tax.
Yes, yeah.
And I think what makes us unique, a bit of conjecture, but we're trying harder than all these municipalities to raise money. And they're tense to emphasize, yeah, conjecture. But trying to change behavior, trying to uh, have traffic move around, trying to do things like. Uh, you know, some of the other many priorities that have in the parking plan about, um, how long do people stay? How long people go off, like helping businesses, I, I, I think we prioritize on other things. And that's a little bit different, but. So it's just, it's a something that, it's just something to keep in mind, we have this constraint that not everybody does, but we've also chosen to make this revenue source. Because for every, forever, for this two hundred and thirty thousand dollars or whatever we put in the budget, that's money we didn't have to raise.
And ultimately, when, when we talk about revenue, you know, revenue sounds like. A big income, we're making money, like we're a business trying to make money, we're, we are, municipalities are not in the business of making money. What, what we talk about with revenue is money to take care of the things that villagers need and want. The dam, the wall, their Main Street, their sidewalks, all those things, we are, we are in a really tough position. Because we don't get the sales tax, and so we're having to generate revenue to provide services. It's not revenue to enrich anyone. That's an important distinction.
So, following what I'm saying, what we're doing might be a bit untested.
Yeah.
Is because by, by using parking to raise revenue, might turn out to be a really bad. To raise as much revenue as we're trying to raise, and I think, I'm speaking for all of us here, we're acknowledging. That four dollars, we should be able to do better, right? Cause it's like, at a certain point, it just doesn't.
We're so far past that, Erin, that was, that was a point where we started and we're acknowledging that it hasn't worked, but there was no one there.
I'd be in favor of two dollars, because I think, I think that is much more in line with what people experience elsewhere. Less of an experiment for, that's untested, for uh, for seeing what else is around. And other, you know, that, of, of, of being too high. Um, and, and I think it's, um. Uh, let's leave it at those two.
Those are two good things. Um, our municipal lot is two.
Three fifty a weekend, and it has a lower rate of maybe two fifty a weekday.
So, the, Michelle's passed the, her budget estimates, and then did the municipal lot, so. Um, we would be lowering the municipal lot also, and it has a much smaller contribution, but it's not nothing, so.
Well, the other thing about the municipal lot is that it's metered twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, but we would still be producing it, I mean, it's.
It's definitely empty a lot of the time.
Well, until we get to peak season, peak season is the, is the aberration, always. Um, I think if you wanna keep it simple, you would need to, Michelle, what, what does that?
Well, that's what we just talked about, right? Was that at the beginning that we wanted to align municipal lot.
Right, but if Michelle is not including those numbers, what kind of a, if we were to drop everything to two an hour, Michelle?
Um, so as I tried to explain in my email, um, the, the parking lot is, doesn't have a set formula. You know, Main Street was uncharted waters, we came up with a formula, it's metered hours. The parking lot, through the years, um, the rates have changed multiple times since it's been metered. Um, they're not always changed on June first, so it's like, you know, we could say, oh, it went up twenty percent, let's just up the budget twenty percent. Um, and get how many people were parking there, it's not like that. Um, we also, I can't keep track of every meter, metered space and how many people are there. So for this, I've taken like an average of trending, um. Metered space and how many people are there. So for this, I've taken like an average of trending, um. And then now that we upped the prices recently, I was able to increase. I took a one year average of what we were doing and upped.
Sorry.
It was about four thousand.
They don't back off the service.
No, they do not.
Thousands of dollars in the parking lot. We upped the rates after that, um.
We missed all of that.
Just for clarity, is it possible to let us know what you, what peak season is? Like what you consider peak season?
Um, I.
I think I'm the chair of the meeting and I'll answer the question. The peak season, it's extending through the year. Sorry, Aaron, but that, that's appropriate protocol. Um. Peak season tends to correspond with leaf season, but it's extending. We all know that with weather changing, it's extending through the year. We're seeing people hiking. The streets are, the streets are busy today. But the busiest time, the busiest seasons from our perspective is. September, October, November, the leaf season. And the hike, the peak hiking season. That doesn't mean that other times are slow anymore. Doesn't mean they're slow. There's other times are rising too, but that is the most intense time. So. And I think we're at a point where we could. Debate back and forth. It seems like we just put something to a vote and make a decision.
Can I, can I make just one other point?
Sure.
Because your peak season reminded me. Uh, that we should, we're setting a single rate that will also cover rent in the off season and, um. And so I think with that in mind. I'm more in favor of two dollars. I'm super concerned about the budget. Um, but I think it's the right thing to do and I think. We're gonna have to say no to things over the coming year, um, and in future, um.
You're learning too. Alright. So. Single price of all the lots, thirty minute minimum, four hour maximum time, two dollar. Per hour. So, some things we can address tonight. We do have to change the code. Uh, which is that extending the parking time limit. When we change the code, we have to have a public hearing. So tonight, I would like to m- make a motion to schedule that public hearing for, um. The twenty. Sixth of May, cause I think, I'm sorry, twenty sixth of June. Um, the changes are small enough and Greg has prepared the red line, so we can be ready for the twenty sixth.
There is one more point that I think might affect this. Which was the idea of the merchant parking area on.
It's not gonna happen before that. It's not, if you, if you, we've got so many things we have to consider there in terms of moving fire hydrants. Figuring out the property lines. If you want change to happen now on these important issues, that needs to wait.
Good.
I, I, I am, I am, I want to have that conversation, but I don't wanna hold up the other good work for that.
Code change, but I guess.
It's not a simple code change. Lots of things that need to happen and we also need to know. We need to understand from a state perspective if we are enabled. To create employee parking. Like classes may do it. Classes may not necessarily be following state enabling legislation and. Okay, so I want to know before we proceed with the decision that is potentially litigious that we're doing at night. So these are the things we can move on tonight. We don't have money to waste on. Getting super things we shouldn't have done. Okay. Um. Alright, so resolution eighteen. Can I just, I'm not. So as long as. We qualify on the twenty sixth? I need to. Okay, so. I feel like my voice has been talking a lot, but someone would like to make their resolution eighteen twenty twenty four.
Happy to. Um, resolution eighteen twenty twenty four, setting a time and date for public hearing, composed of twelve, amending chapter one five six of the village code. Brian Mark picked up and seconded by.
Let's go.
Uh, trustee Starbuck to wit, whereas the board of trustees of the village of Cold Springs each do update the village code by amending chapter one twenty six. Vehicles and traffic, set a time and place. Public hearing to consider such amendments. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board hereby. Determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of proposed local law, the project. In accord with New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA. And part six seventeen of the regulations implementing SECPRA. Since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, let it be further resolved that a public hearing. Be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed amendments to the vote. Listed chapter and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse economic. Environmental, sorry, impact. Of the proposed legislation in accord with SECPRA on Wednesday, June twenty sixth, seven P M, Village Hall, eighty five Main Street, Cold Spring, New York. And let it be further resolved that the village court could hereby authorize and direct it to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given. As provided by law.
Trustee Sorbo.
Aye.
Trustee Phil Swartz.
Aye.
Trustee Bosie.
Aye.
Trustee Cromer.
Aye.
Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Okay. So the next decisions we make. Motions we make are changes to the. Fee schedule to reflect, um. To reflect the two dollars an hour, and then once the code is changed. Um, the comments on the, on the fee schedule can be changed for the descriptors of, uh, ti- of time amounts on that schedule. So there's, if you look at the fee schedule, there are two columns. There's fees and comments. The fees we can adjust tonight, the comments we can adjust after the public hearing, cause that, that follows the Pope.
And the comments. Alright, it, it has the like Saturday, Sunday and holidays.
Right.
Can we change that? Is that in the comment section? So we'll do that later.
Exactly, okay. Uh, so tonight, the, the modification is the dollar amount. And we are, I believe. Proposing two dollars across the board. Yep?
Yep.
Okay, someone like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution nineteen twenty twenty four, adopting master fee schedule. The following resolution was offered by myself, trustee Starbuck. For adoption and seconded by.
Me? Laura.
Laura Bosie, trustee Bosie, um, whereas the village of Cold Spring. Has previously adopted a master fee schedule for the village and whereas the board of trustees on June twelfth, twenty twenty four. Did amend the fees related to parking meters as follows. Municipal parking lot fair street, Monday through Friday, twenty four hours up to three days, two dollars an hour. Municipal parking lot fair street, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, holidays, twenty four hours up to three days, two dollars, two dollars an hour. Mayor's park parking lot fair street, Monday through Friday, twenty four hours up to three days for two dollars an hour. Mayor's park parking lot fair street, Saturday, Sunday and holidays, twenty four hours up to three days for two dollars an hour and Main Street. From ninety to the railroad tracks, Friday. Through Sundays, um, not and holidays, just Fridays and Sundays through Sundays. From ten A M. to six P M. up to three hours for two dollars an hour. It is hereby resolved that the master fee schedule attached is updated to include of listed fees for short term rentals. Um, no.
Good.
Parking meters.
Parking meters.
Parking meters.
Okay, the final record will correct.
Trustee Starbuck.
Aye.
Trustee Phil Swartz. Trustee Bosie.
Aye.
Trustee Crymar.
Aye.
Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Okay, and then the last, um, item is the, the thirty minute increment and that's not, I mean, I. Make a motion to set the minimum at thirty minutes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's a programming step on that next, okay?
Quick comment. Thank you very much for preparing the templates in advance. I think it saved us at least two weeks.
For the resolutions?
Yeah.
First job.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you, Greg. Okay, we do have a couple of other items of business. We've covered, we've covered everything we needed to cover about grant applications.
Yeah, we'll check those out. Bring your strap.
Um, next item is, there's not, this is not an action item for us to be taken, but when an application is made to the New York State. Um, liquor authority for the extension of a liquor license, we are notified. This is for. The outdoor area behind Slade and Sean, just letting us know that the application is being received. Um, obviously that would have to go through, go through a site plan process. So there's no vote on this, it's just notification.
Okay, they don't have a liquor.
They do, um, I believe that they are intending to apply for outdoor space. We haven't just done that plan before, and I, I don't know enough about New York State liquor law to know why it would be different indoors versus outdoors.
Great.
But they're. Full service, I guess. Excuse me, um. We don't have any minutes. Oh, right, oh, C Street, I'm sorry. So, um. Liza, you wanna walk us through this? You've had, you had correspondence with James.
Yes, I spoke with the owner of C Street this morning. Um, he had sent us the schedule back in late February, um, which was shared with the board on April second. And the budget was kind of based on those, those projected, um, numbers and dates. He hasn't changed any of the dates, um, but he is. Kind of landed on his docking needs, which weren't clear when he sent this over originally, which is why we kind of sat on it for a while. Um, and so now his, he's, he's proposing to do two Saturdays in the summer. Saturday, July thirteenth and Saturday, and Saturday, August tenth. Um, and those are cruises that go on to Milton, so they would be docking in Milton, not in Cold Spring, dropping off in Cold Spring. Um, and from my understanding of it, he can get more passengers on those boats, cause the one, he can get, he can sell four hundred tickets to Cold Spring. But not, but he'll sell more to going up to Milton, so that serves his need, um, as his, his business plan. Um, for the autumn schedule, he's asking.
So, so what we added to the agenda for tonight was a discussion of the summer dates.
Okay.
Not the autumn schedule. I think that's a larger discussion we need to have.
Okay.
Um. So, so you are proposing.
So, yeah, I.
For the July thirteenth and August tenth, Saturdays, with drop off, you know, part, no, no docking.
That's right. Can I ask a question? Um, so he's taking, it's a larger, is it the same size boat? It's just. He explained that differently, some of them, four hundred could be getting off here, but then more of them could be going to Milton.
That's right, so he, he only has a larger boat available for Cold Springs. Um, trips, or that's what he's planning. Um, and so it fits up to, I think, eight hundred people.
That is not what we're going to take up.
In the past, we have, you know, we've realized that. When we had that many people in the village, it was way too many and like people were just angry and unhappy and hungry and there wasn't enough food. So we capped it at four hundred in the past, um, and that has seemed to work for us, so.
But isn't the docking fee by foot?
It is by foot. The number of people don't affect us financially.
It affects comfort wise. For the size of the boat, the larger vessel. The other reason, he's try, Milton has a deep water dock. I guess, which we do not. He's trying to, I think, he's trying to shift. His model so that he's docking more at Milton as availability has been less at Western.
I guess my question was, is this potentially a higher, like a higher rate than we were expecting, but it's a bigger boat? It would be if it were a bigger boat.
If it's a bigger boat, then yes, so I'll have to go back to him on that. Um, would that change the board's decision?
As long as he's, as we keep the cap.
Well, just, just for clarity, right? We've had a cap in the past of four hundred. He's requesting, but the cap has not been on the number of passengers, right?
It has been on the number of passengers, absolutely.
Oh, okay, so it's not just the number of people getting off, it's the number of passengers.
People getting off at Cold Spring, sorry.
So which one is?
We have, how many?
So you may not disembark more than four hundred passengers at Cold Spring at one time.
Right.
Which for the, in the past, it was two boats at almost eight hundred people on each boat.
Right.
Per day.
That's crazy dude. Um, we have never kept. The size of the boat, but it has never benefited him to have a huge boat, cause it costs more to operate that and to. For gas and fuel and. Crew and all of that, so, um. But a larger boat does not hurt us financially. We've benefited us financially.
And obviously, we don't have a contract in front of us tonight. What we have in front of us tonight is a proposal and then we would draw a contract.
Right. So I propose we approve, um, his summer schedule for twenty twenty four, first Saturday, July thirteenth and sorry, August tenth. With a limit of four hundred passengers dropping off in Cold Spring.
I would, I would second, we need the revenue. Not fair. All fair?
Aye.
Real post? We don't have many minutes.
We have no minutes.
We have bills.
So now this is the time of year when we take two votes, one closing out the last fiscal year and I'm starting the new fiscal year. So the first is for the, for the current fiscal year, we've got batch.
I have both batches.
Numbers here.
Even numbers.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve batch number. Seven four one one for the current year, amounting to eighty nine thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and fourteen.
Second.
Aye.
Prior year.
We'll make a motion to approve. Batch. Four thousand, the, sorry, seven four one oh for last year. For the amount of fifty one thousand, three hundred, eighty nine and ninety six cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, would you like to entertain?
Um, I would.
Right, Liza made some motions to entertain public.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So is there anyone? Can we still step after three? Three minutes, all rules apply, three minutes.
Maintain the forum.
I would say one thing. Sorry, uh, I wanna say thank you for the, for bringing those, uh, changes to the parking. I, uh, just will say very succinctly in much less than three minutes. That I still firmly believe that a hundred and fifty five resident spots is too many. I feel like having a, a percentage of those be converted.
That's not on the agenda tonight, so we'll come back to that. So tonight we're taking comments on agenda items.
I thought that was with.
Tonight we're talking about Main Street meters and times. You'll, you meant, sorry, at the beginning of the meeting, we explained that there are three categories that we're breaking parking into.
For the changes to the meters and times.
Thank you. Okay.
Just one question, Eliza, can you ask James from C Street to maybe announce on the boat for people? To use bathrooms on the boat or?
We always do, every year we add, cause they do that.
That would be so helpful.
Yeah, yeah, we always do.
Yeah, okay, so we have in the past, we had porta, porta potties down there. Decent ones, people walk, we will not use them, walk or pass them, no wait in line at the bottom or ask shop. It's one of our challenges.
We charge four dollars an hour for the boat?
Believe me, we looked into everything. You used to be able to talk to, to a coin. Access public transport, you can't in New York anymore. Man, alright, well, anybody else?
Also, thank you.
No, you're welcome. Okay, so here, no further.